All right, welcome everybody. I'm going to call this for this meeting, regular meeting to order for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. And if you would please rise and join me in the pleasure of the agents. And my ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one America, individual liberty and justice for all. Uh, no, I am going to take my mask off because we're distance in here. So that's within the confines of the, uh, the order. So just to make sure people can hear me and you're welcome to as well because you are also distance. Um, let me see, do we have anybody? On the line, uh, first order of business is public comments. If there are any comments anybody would like to share, you can unmute yourselves and speak up. And that may be the case that, um, we just have folks on who are with EDC. So I will move on to correspondence.
There's no correspondence.
No correspondence. Thank you. First election report, a couple of things I'd like to cover with you. Uh, number one, um, as I'm sure, uh, my colleagues know, everybody watching this knows this Saturday, September 11th is a very solemn anniversary. It is the 20 year anniversary of the September 11th tax, the tax for 2001. Uh, the fire services in Bethel are planning a special ceremony to begin at 7:30 a.m. here at the, uh, front steps of the municipal center. Uh, and it will conclude shortly after eight o'clock, but it will mark the exact times that the hijacked airliners impacted the buildings in New York and the Pentagon and, uh, crashed after the heroic efforts of the passengers in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. I will not be able to be there. Um, unfortunately, I, you know, I should say unfortunately, it is something that I should be attending. However, my son's wedding, which was postponed for a year because of COVID, is also occurring on Saturday, the 11th. I'm going to be, um, up in Lynchfield County for that. So, um, okay, uh, happy occasion mixed with a very sad, uh, uh, anniversary as well. But I invite everybody to invite my colleagues, of course, invite everybody to attend and participate in that ceremony. Once again, it begins at 7:30 a.m., uh, here at the front steps of the municipal center on Saturday, 11th, Saturday, it'll be 11th of September.
Oh, represent.
Yeah, and, uh, Rich will be representing, uh, the town of Bethel and speaking on behalf of all of us here in the for selection. Um, on to other things, uh, worst kept secrets in the world. Our longtime comptroller, I'm making the official announcement of things that we already know, but, uh, Mr. Kozlowski will be retiring at the end of September. Um, he announced that about a month ago and made it informal. Um, now his, uh, my colleagues probably remember from when we hired Bob. Uh, the way our charter is structured, the board of finance is responsible for making a recommendation to this board. They are in the process of, uh, attracting, uh, candidates and they will, they will interview candidates over the next week or so, and they will make a recommendation for us, uh, probably by the, before the end of the month. Um, and Bob said that he would make himself available if there's any kind of a, you know, a lag, then that we had a gap to fill, uh, or get a, get a new person up to speed. Uh, obviously we have, uh, very, very strong internal candidate, but they will be interviewing a couple of external candidates as well. So I'll keep you informed as, as we go through that process. And of course, Anne Skinko is here with us, our longtime tax collector who has just done a fantastic job. There's a reason why we always exceed the estimated tax collection rate is because she has just done a fantastic job on behalf of the people of Bethel and has kept our revenue stream, uh, help, very healthy and protected. And she will be retiring at the end of October and once he's.
October 22nd.
October 2, I was, I was gonna say October 31st, like a Halloween.
Surprise.
October 22nd. So, uh, for both Anne and Bob, I just want to, uh, I, I see Bob, I don't think Bob is on with us tonight. I see Brad is here. But I just wanted to express, uh, my deep appreciation for all the great work that, um, you've, you've both done over the years for the town of Bethel. Bob in particular had, um, I see Anne had a, had a great mentor to, to get her started and to work with for a while. Bob took over shortly after Barry Carina sadly passed away, uh, while in the job and had to pick up with, you know, he had been working as the town treasurer, but that's not the same as being involved in the day-to-day financial decisions and knowing all the ins and outs of all that. The, the enterprise funds, the utilities, the collections, all that stuff. So, uh, my hat's off to both Anne and Bob for the great work that they've done. Um, next I want to make sure I, uh, recognize and congratulate our emergency operations team and our fire services. Um, so we had tropical storm, what was it called? Ida?
Henry.
Well, we had, I made the one, the one last weekend that caused so much trouble was not even expected to be much of a big deal. Uh, I call it a tropical storm that massive amounts of rain, whatever, whatever language that is. Um, there were many homes that were flooded, parts of town flooded and were impassable that had never flooded before. Um, the town of Bethel received varying amounts down in the, in the, from the middle of the town to, uh, the southern part of town, we received five and a half inches of rain. The, uh, the north end of town up at Stony Hill, William Brookfield, received almost seven inches of rain in a five hour period. I think the, the total for the, for the, uh, Stony Hill neighborhoods was 6.7 inches of rain over five hours. Now, when you consider that, uh, the drainage systems, the storm drain systems in the United States in general, and in this area in particular, that were designed over a century ago, were built to withstand and to effectively drain five inches of rain in 24 hours. So when you look, think about the magnitude of six and a half inches of rain over five hours, there's nowhere for that water to go but in people's homes and across roads and do a lot of damage. So our fire services were up all night pumping out basements, you know, for a couple of days. Uh, Tom Galliford, uh, has always did a great job of coordinating all those activities. We didn't have any power outages to speak of. There were a few spot outages and one planned shutdown that ever source had to cut the power to 700 Bethel homes temporarily in order to fix a broken, uh, backbone line. They called it the Danbury. But aside from that, no wind damage, just water. Uh, my house had a foot of water in it, in a drawn furnace, but fortunately, uh, it's fixable. So it's not gonna, I don't have to call FEMA to try to get a flame on that. And, uh, the last thing I just wanted to mention, and then, uh, Paul, this was, this was, uh, due to your question at the last meeting about the charter revision, um, we're still not in a position to, to move forward with that. Uh, a couple of the members of the, the former commission have not agreed to, uh, to go back on and do that again. So it's something that we're probably going to have to deal with, uh, either later or after the election, you know, when, when it comes up. Cause there's some folks that, I guess they had their fill of it. So, but, uh, that's, that's all I have for the first elections report. Uh, Rich and Paul, did you guys have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanna say, Anne, uh, thank you for your years of service there. It's commendable. I wish I had a couple of employees like you and, uh, I had accounts collectible too, but that was a different era. Years ago, I mean, your, your record stands second to nobody's, you know, terrific. And, you know, and Paula, you're, you're part of that team too. So.
Absolutely. I would have never been able to do any of it without my staff.
You know, I mean, you had a commendable staff, you did a commendable job. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
You're on call, right?
I am on call.
Well, I, I will admit that, um, her original date that she told me was earlier than October 22nd. We did, we, our guilty was stronger on me here, just a little.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And, and Bob, well, so Bob, uh, helped us out a lot and with the, uh, publicly told these folks and yes, kind of sun on the street. And with that.
That is definitely the case. All right, um, moving on to item number five, consideration of, uh, minutes of the August 17th meeting, and I'll put a motion on the floor that we accept those minutes.
Okay.
Okay, you got that one first. Are there any, any changes, any comments?
No.
Hearing them, those, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, that motion carries. Uh, consideration of overpayment of taxes. And, um, we will still have Anne here for one more meeting to do this, but for this one, I'll put a motion on the floor that we authorize refunds in the amount of $13,112.32 as a result of overpaying the taxes. Second by Rich, any questions for Anne?
No.
All right, hearing them, those in favor, say aye. Aye. That carries. Item number seven, consideration of appointment of tax collector. Um, do, do you, I had to set up an executive session anticipated, but it's entirely optional. I mean, would you prefer that we speak in executive session? Okay.
Either or.
Well, um, it is, uh, it is my recommendation to this board that, uh, we appoint Paula Usher to the position of, uh, tax collector upon Anne's retirement. Uh, Paula has, uh, you've been with us since.
22 years.
22 years.
2007.
Um, and I know that.
Oh, 22 years altogether, that's 14 years with you. I had eight years in writing.
Okay. Um, but I, I know you've had the world's greatest teacher. So, um, I just wanted to open up this discussion to my colleagues and, uh, okay, so, all right, so I, I made that a motion that we appoint Paula. Um, and I think Paula has your endorsement as well, Anne, is that correct?
Absolutely. I've told her she could put me on speed dial, but I will tell you, I don't participate for calling me because I've been planning my retirement for some time and she has gone through the process with me and she's very, very capable to take over in my place. And probably improve on it.
Okay. Do, uh, do you gentlemen have any questions?
Welcome aboard, Paula. I mean, it, uh, I mean, we, we can't say nothing negative about the tax collectors office. And, you know, you guys got a beautiful working machine there.
Thank you. We're a team. We're a good team. We are a good team.
All right, great. Any, any other comments or questions? Welcome aboard us.
Thank you.
All right, then I will try your minds. Those in favor of appointing Ms. Paula Usher as tax collector, please say aye. Aye. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
The hot seat will be yours on, uh, October 23rd.
No, that's a Saturday.
Okay, 23rd. All right, well, Paula, congratulations sincerely. And best of luck, I'm sure. It'll be great. Uh, so now that we have this appointment, I will also announce that our, uh, very capable tax clerk, uh, Aaron Scott will be promoted to fill, to backfill Paula's position as assistant tax collector upon that. And, um, again, I really want to thank and congratulate Anne on creating a succession plan that, you know, the, the taxpayers can rely on an effective office without skipping a beat. So thank you very much. You both did a great job with that. Anyway, I spoke with her and I know she's very excited about that too.
Uh, can I ask a question about her? Does she have all of her certifications?
She does. She's always so.
Yep, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Um, thank you for being here. It was kind of a quick meeting, but.
No.
Better for you guys.
Come on, we have some champagne. All right, I'm going to move on to item number eight. Um, update from the Economic Development Commission. I'd like to welcome, uh, Mike Boyle, Chair of the Commission, and Janice Christiane, uh, our Economic Development Director, and turn the floor over to them. Can, uh, can you folks hear us okay?
I hear you fine. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, and congratulations, Paula. A little bit. Uh, we, uh, we've got two things to kind of go over. Um, one is a, a, a brief update on what's going on with Clark Park. That's moving along and then, uh, talk about the, uh, small business, uh, program. So Janice, why don't you take us through the, uh, Clark Park, uh, update?
Sure, great. Um, as you're all aware, uh, we received, uh, funding from the state in the amount of $635,000, um, at the end of July. Uh, since then, we put out a RFP. Um, we advertised that on August 2nd, and we're expecting to get our responses back on September 17th. Um, at that time, we plan to make our bid selection. Um, and we will have, um, the numbers we need um, to provide you with, um, an overview at your meeting at October 5th, where we will be looking for the remainder of the funding for the project. Um, and then once we meet with you, um, we will go to the Board of Finance for their approval and a town meeting at the end of the month. Um, once we get that approval, we have to send it to the state and we hope to have a bid contract um, in place by the end of October with construction in the winter, um, into the spring, appraisals and marketing happening in the spring 2022 and sale in the summer of 2022. This is 2021. I'm in denial that we're almost in 2022, but we're looking at sales of those lots in the summer of, um, 2022. In terms of estimated project costs, we've presented these numbers before. We are anticipating probably a 10% increase because of the labor and, um, and construction costs that we anticipate we will have. So we're estimating the, um, expenditures right now for this project to be 1.2 for the construction of the site alone. Like I said before, we'll have a better idea once we have the bids on September 17th. We do, um, estimate we'll have about $100,000 of other costs, um, for legal services, appraisal, real estate, marketing, and engineering consultant for a total cost of $1.3 million. Dion, you can go to another page. In terms of revenue, um, we are, we have four lots, 13.2 acres. Um, we're estimating the sales prices of those lots to be about 1.6 million. Um, we're actually thinking the price for that will be higher. When we got these estimates, it was a few years ago. Um, and that was based on, um, estimates from a couple of years prior. So based on what we're seeing in the market in terms of industrial property, we're thinking that we will, um, be able to sell the price, uh, the lots for more. But right now, this is the, uh, the latest information we have based on our estimates done a couple of years ago with Malone. Um, and that would represent about $132,000 in property taxes alone. That doesn't include, um, any personal property taxes. So if we sell the lot for about 1.6, um, the project cost will be about the 1.3. Um, the state will contribute 635, will be contributing approximately 752, which brings us to around a profit of, uh, $900,000. And again, this could change based on, um, the sale of the, of the properties, um, that we are, that we are talking about. So that's kind of where we are with the project. Um, I don't know if you have any questions. I know the last time we talked to you was probably about six months ago. So we just wanted to kind of, and that was prior to, um, us receiving the state funding. So we just wanted to give, um, give that the most recent information to you. And like I said, in the next few weeks, we'll have some more concrete numbers for you.
Uh, just, just to refresh everybody a little bit, uh, we did go back, back in 2019, we awarded the Bellaccio, the, uh, they were the low bid for the, uh, infrastructure work at Clark Park. And, uh, when we went back to them, there was no way they could continue to honor that price. We had kept them updated over the course of the last couple of years. But COVID, uh, put that out of reach for them to be able to honor that price, which really put us in a situation where we had to go out to rebid. So that's why in, in fairly short order, once we, and the reason we couldn't follow through with Apollatio was that we were waiting for the state, which took, uh, years, but finally, uh, in fact, the amount of money that the state has, is contributing represents approximately 50% of the cost of what we had from 2019. So in essence, anything that's higher than that initial price, uh, will be the burden of the town. But, uh, under no circumstance is it, um, uh, not in my view, a home run for the town. Uh, in terms of the profit, we should see off the sale of the lots. Uh, we do think that the lot pricing is undervalued. That was a quote given to us by Malone back in 2019. Uh, and particularly for that kind of property, uh, we're seeing uh, much more demand. So we would expect that there could be an uptick, but we're sticking with the numbers that we have been given by an outside consultant for now. And, um, and the town portion is we're, we're representing there is, uh, 735,000 if they comes in with approximate 10% increase from what it was in 2019. And then, uh, the tax revenue is also an estimate as well going forward. So, um, it's, uh, it's moving along and, and hopefully as Janice says, we have a fairly aggressive timetable, but by next year, we should be able to, uh, uh, get those lots sold.
Can you start selling the lots now? Or do you want to get the infrastructure first?
I think, I think when we try to look at getting like formal appraisals, because we, we are going to want to appraise it. We've had some people express interest. Um, I think, uh, we'll have a better story to tell when we have a road and, and infrastructure and sewer and, and the stubs for all the utilities. So I think right now, we've, uh, we're, we're looking to hold off uh, until we can actually get this work in place.
Uh, as I recall, uh, I, I know you don't have letters of commitment, but you do have strong interest on two of the lots at this point. Is that correct?
Uh, I mean, the, definitely have interests. There's been, um, you know, I've, I've, Janice and I have had conversation with one uh, company that's, uh, considering a move, uh, very small. Um, you know, so I honestly don't think we're gonna have too much trouble selling the lots. I think that the, uh, that they should hopefully go fairly quickly. So, uh, we haven't seen anything negative in any respect as it relates to being able to move the lots once we have everything completed.
Okay. Janice, what was the amount of the grant again, please? So, the $17.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
No. Yeah, Marty has one. I just have one. What are you gonna do with any profit that's generated?
What's that?
What are you gonna do with any profit that's generated?
Uh, I don't know. Janice needs a new car. I need one.
Why don't you give some thought of giving discounts to some of the people when they buy the lots, the faster they put up the buildings, the greater discount they'll get. Oh. It's assuming once you know what all your costs are.
Listen, right, right now, it, it's, uh, um, when we get to, it, it's hard for any of us to speak about what ifs, because we don't know how much it's gonna end up costing us right now on paper. Great in terms of having, uh, a profit to it. But as we get further down the line, I think we'll have an opportunity and EDC will be making some recommendations as to, uh, uh, the best use in terms of, uh, the funds that, from this.
Mike, I understand that, but, you know, you people are the ones that came up with $900,000.
Marty, I, to be honest with you, I can't really hear half of what you're saying.
Oh, I said, your, your group is the one that came up with the $900,000, not the board of select. I mean, you must have numbers from someplace where you came up with those things.
Yeah, no, those, the numbers that we got were from Malone. We, we asked Malone, because they, they were the ones that initially prepared the original bid and, and basically put together based on what they have seen at that time, which that data gave, was given to us in 2019. And that data is actually reflective of numbers that they had from 2016, 2017, and 2018. So the numbers that we're showing you based on what had Malone had given us is, um, I would call that dated. Now, I actually think based on what we're seeing in the park in terms of demand, that, um, that those numbers could actually be low.
Uh, so in case you couldn't hear all of that, uh, because of our, the acoustics in here, what, what Marty's suggesting is that you, you're, you're gonna be, at this point, you're estimating to be 900,000 to the plus, when this is all said and done. And, uh, he's suggesting that consideration should be given to some further economic incentive, uh, such as, uh, perhaps a, a rebate or a discount to businesses to get them to not only buy the property, but to construct, finish their construction as early as possible, you know, some sort of an incentive. It's something to, it's something that would have to be.
Yeah, some, so, I mean, you know, as far as, to be honest with you, as far as the monies are concerned, I don't believe there's anything that says that, uh, that money, it, I've always looked at this money that belongs to the town. Now that. That, you know, so. Right, but, uh, but at the same time, I'm fairly confident we'll come back with a recommendation as we get a better snapshot and things become a lot clearer for us as we head into next year as to, um, what recommendations we would make, make, um, to further, uh, the economic growth of the town.
Yep.
And Mike, when, uh, McBlum looked at, uh, the infrastructure down there, is that pumping station big enough to support the new lots? Or does that pumping station have to be upgraded?
I believe.
It does not have to be upgraded.
Yeah, it does not have to be upgraded. That, we were told that upfront.
Okay.
You know, once again, once everything, as we get into it, we'll learn more.
I want to look at that PUC.
Yeah.
Cause there's some upgrades that needs to be done.
Yeah, when we originally were, um, uh, suggesting this program, PUC was going through an evaluation of their own. So this project was included in that evaluation in terms of what would be required.
Yeah, Janice communicated with Tom Goon on that, you know, some months ago. All right, well, that's a, we'll follow up.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the generators, because those generators are probably.
Oh, yeah.
Right, thanks.
All right, yeah, well, Jazz, you and I can follow up on that and.
Yeah.
QC agenda too.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, Paula, any questions? No, none. All right, um, now there, before we move on, I just wanted to let Mike and Janice know that we have two things a little bit out of order and it's not that big of a deal, but uh, one of the updates you, we'd like you to do is your proposal for a small business assistance program, which is part of the ARPA funds. So if you'd like to cover the details on that now, that would be terrific. However, before we, before we put that up for a vote tonight, I'm gonna have Brad just run through the, the list of all the ARPA things that the committee came up with. Yours, of course, is to be at the top of the list, but, um, I just wanted to make it, make you aware of that. So if you want to go on and, and tell us about how your proposal for the, uh, and this is a COVID related thing, it, it would be using some of the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds. So, uh, please, Janice and Mike, feel free to give us a rundown of that too.
Sure. All right, let's, uh, jump right into that. Janice, why don't you start us? Yes, you're muted.
Okay, that was my practice. Um, the Bethel Economic Development Commission is recommending that the town offer a small business assistant program using the ARPA funds, as Matt had said, to financially assist businesses in response to the challenges brought on by the coronavirus pandemic. This program will provide limited one-time direct financial assistance, and that would be in the form of a grant to eligible Bethel small businesses that employ 25 or fewer employees and that have been adversely impacted by COVID. And the funding would also have to help the business and/or the Bethel business community become stronger. And the business can apply for a grant up to $5,000. Um, when we were here back in, um, 2020, we had provided you with an update of where we were, um, in terms of the business challenges because of COVID. We based our information on two local surveys that we had done and two state surveys that were made available for us. And this table here provides really a summary of that. Um, that 99% of businesses were impacted by the pandemic, 24% of businesses were closed, 71% were in need of immediate cash flow. There was an 81% revenue. 24% of businesses were closed, 71% were in need of immediate cash flow. There was an 81% revenue decline, so on and so forth. In April of 2021, there was another survey that was conducted by the Small Business Development Center. Um, and it was really, again, trying to address some of the business challenges, um, that were out there. And at that time, they were still seeing that, um, businesses had a decline in revenue, um, that they had increased in expenses and decrease in profitability, that they were still needing financial assistance. If you remember the PPP loans, um, and the EIDL loans, those were really loans, some of which businesses didn't apply for because they could not take on more debt. Um, and at that time, um, it wasn't in the form of, you know, it wasn't spoken for the PP loan specific that it would be forgivable. And it was really towards, um, those programs were really towards keeping people on the payroll. So with that, because of the structuring of those loans, um, there were still a lot of, um, expenses and financial need that businesses had that weren't being addressed. Um, they needed assistance for overall business strategy because of COVID. There, they had to, they have to adjust and change their, um, overall business strategy, their marketing strategy. They have to expand offerings, um, based on COVID, and they need to expand online offerings. So these are some of the challenges, some of the old challenges and some of the new challenges as recent as April 2021. In terms of, um, in August of 2021, so this is probably the most recent survey that's been out there was by the National Restaurant Association. Um, this was a mid-year update and it was really towards, um, restaurants and, and any type of service or catering industry around food. Um, and they, they identified some of the challenges that they are still having, um, is recruiting and retaining employees. I know some of our businesses spend over a thousand dollars a month just trying to recruit business, uh, recruit employees. The increase, there's been a huge increase in wholesale food costs, rising hourly earnings, and still they're seeing, although they've seen some confidence, um, come back in terms of consumers, they're not seeing what they had originally had. So they're still seeing that there's low consumer confidence, which means people aren't going out, um, to restaurants and eating as much as they did prior to COVID. So we didn't conduct any local surveys, but what we did was we reached out to local businesses, um, and we had conversations with them to see what are some of the old challenges that you're still having and what are some of the new challenges? So this page pretty much summarized some of the feedback that we've gotten from businesses. Um, some of the, um, some of those challenges is the constantly shifting normal and the market condition. Um, they've been experiencing that for the past 18 months, and they're still experiencing that now because they don't know what the next three or four months is going to bring. Funding about, only about 45% of our Bethel businesses have received funding. Um, and again, most of that funding or part of that funding was in terms of a loan and not grants. Workforce is still a challenge for them. They're having difficulty filling positions and they're finding that they need to have new jobs or roles in response to COVID. There are supply chain issues. We're seeing that all over the place, even in construction with Clark Park. I mean, just the supply chain issue has been a real challenge for them. They're still in the need for working capital. Um, they're seeing increased costs due to flexible work environments, automation, employee mental health issues and company culture and workplace connections. So they're investing more money or seeing the need to invest more money in those areas. Um, better pay and protections, especially in the, um, in the essential, uh, for the essential workers. They're having to uh, provide better pay, better benefits and production, protections for those workers. And there's a lot of costs for that. Um, health and safety, uh, there's costs associated with health and safety that they need to address. Um, they're still saying that they need money for capital equipment, computers and such, um, that they didn't need prior. And they're seeing that they're having to do a lot of structural changes, um, in response to, in response to the pandemic. So that's kind of, um, what we're seeing. And based on all that information, the Economic Development Commission found in that they wanted to, um, provide a business assistance program, um, to kind of help those businesses. And the intent of the program is not to save a business that is failing, but it's really addressed those costs and, um, some of those needs that businesses, that strong businesses have to make them even stronger. Um, so they had requested about $350,000. That would provide us the opportunity to support 70 small business, um, 70 small businesses. This program has already been reviewed by the ARPA committee. Um, and they have included it, as Matt had mentioned, in their phase one ARPA funding plan. Um, we believe that $5,000 is sufficient amount for a business to implement a well thought out strategy, whether it be a marketing workforce or online sales program, or providing an out, an outdoor dining space, um, for, for their patrons. Um, that solves a pandemic created challenge, and that's what we're looking to do. Um, and just as informational, the town of Fairfield offers a very similar program. Um, to date, they have received 103 applications and they have awarded $322,000. And the average grant amount, um, which really has the same qualifications as our program, has been about $4,000, $4,029. Um, so you know, this further solidifies that $5,000, which we felt would be sufficient, has been sufficient, um, in, in Fairfield. So, um, I think that's all. I did send out, um, more information, um, earlier in the day, um, about it. And this is kind of a quick overview, but if you have any questions on that or on the information that I just presented, we'd be happy to, to answer those questions.
Um, just to clarify, when the applications, uh, and thank you for that, by the way, that was a very thorough, uh, informative presentation and as well as the documentation that you said, uh, earlier, uh, in the, late, late last week. Um, so the, when an application is filled out and it is submitted, it is the EDC that will review that application and make the decision to, to recommend or not, correct?
That is correct.
I'll, I'll comment on the, on that part, man. What we're going to, um, do with EDC is essentially with Janice, uh, set up a subcommittee, which will be some rotating members of EDC to review the applications and then bring to the full commission to make a recommendation to the board of selectmen. So, uh, you know, the, the max amount that someone can request is $5,000. What we don't know is how many applications we may receive. Uh, we're going to, you know, vet the applications, uh, and ask if you've looked at some of the material, we asked for quite a bit of information. And, uh, based on that, uh, EDC would be recommending to the board of selectmen, uh, the, uh, an amount, uh, for, uh, each business, uh, up to that $5,000 amount.
Okay. Okay. You guys have questions? No. Rich, do you have questions?
Um, on your application, uh, I would maybe suggest that you have them, um, have a notary assignment that they're testing, that everything is truthful in their application.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any other questions, Rich?
No.
All right. No, no, let me, uh, let me tell you that, uh, the EDC, uh, and through, through Mike and Janice have really been pushing to, to get this fast track, to make this money available now that we, we have it. Um, before I put a motion on the floor though, I do want Brad, uh, Brad, I think you're on, correct?
Uh, yeah, I was on before everything was fine until you wanted me to talk and then everything died on me. Just as life goes.
Before, before we, uh, before I put a motion on this particular program, I, I would like you to, uh, just run through the list of the first year recommendations from the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act Committee. Now, just to remind everybody, a couple of months ago, uh, we, we formed a committee of, uh, stakeholders from the various departments and other commissions to review the use, uh, the possible use of the $5.8 million that the town of Bethel is going to get on, on, on the town side, that's separate from the board bedside. Um, and they, they're, the, the rules for use of the funds are fairly liberal. Um, anything that benefits taxpayers, that benefits the community, makes the community safer, makes our employees safer. Uh, so things like improving ventilation, uh, improving recreational opportunities, uh, any kind of capital improvements that benefit, uh, the residents of the town, uh, are all fair game for use of the ARPA funds as best we know. There, there's still some question about that because US Treasury has not really been very specific. In fact, though, when you call them up and ask them, they'll say, don't ask them to, don't ask it to pre-approve anything because we're not going to do that. Uh, the only thing they've said is you can't directly lower taxes or pay for pensions with the funds, but other uses, um, and this is certainly one, uh, one of the, one of the recommended uses was targeting, uh, business activity to make sure that your small businesses in town, uh, were, were not adversely impacted and, and really struggled because of the, the pandemic. But I would like Brad to just run through the list of recommendations from the committee for the first year. So Brad, take it away. Uh, and I think you guys have a copy.
Yeah. Um, thanks, Matt. So before I get into it, I just want to let you know who's on the committee. I know you guys voted on it, but just to remind everybody, um, myself as the chairman, Matt, uh, Eric Swenson, the public works director, Nick Cataldo, who's the network administrator for the town, Eileen Earl, parking rec director, Lisa Plum, who's the senior center director, and Janice Crenzieanik, Christianic. You know what? I can say it when I don't try to say it fast, but screws up Janice. I'm sorry. So that's our committee. We've been meeting a couple of times. Um, obviously, we'll start by how much money the town has received. We received $2,929 and, sorry, $2,929,911. Um, so far, the board of select, the board of selectmen approved 20,000 at your last meeting, which was for the plans and drawing for renovation of the front hall, restaurants and locker rooms. Um, the first item that we have on our list is the Small Business Assistance Program, which Janice has already talked about. Um, then the next item that falls in our community development, we have Parloa Park improvements for a million dollars. One of the things the committee really wanted to do there is we really kind of stressed that at the end of the day, when the taxpayers ask what we spent this first $3 million on, what do we have to show for it? So one of the big things we talked about is what could the, everybody in the community use? And one of the things is, let's improve the parks. For even people that don't use the parks, their grandchildren could, their friends that come visit. Um, so we just thought that was a good use of the money. Um, we're working on with, uh, Malone and McBroom to get an estimate on how much it would cost to draw some plans to get it to the point that we could bid it. Um, the initial parking next study that was done, uh, had $920,000 as the estimate for the park. Um, so we bumped that up a million to a million dollars just as a, with some contingency in there for escalation. Um, so we'll probably at your next meeting, or the first meeting in October, come with a request for some money for the study, further study of Parloa. Um, the next item on there is $50,000 for the scanning of building health and planning documents. Um, with our new online permitting system that we're working on, um, we've talked about for years, once it's up and running, we want to scan all the documents that planning and zoning, health have, so that somebody can go online and do all their posts, their, the plans for their house, their permits, and just have that online accessible to everybody. Um, not only will that help the office to get more people to look for stuff online, also it just makes it easier for the residents to access their own files. Um, any questions so far?
Well, I'll go back to the Parloa Park after. When you run through it, Brad, and then we'll.
Okay. Um, our next category is emergency operations. Uh, the first item on there is HVAC at the high school. Um, the high school has had air conditioning issues for a while now. Um, we currently are putting together specs for a bid on it. The board of that has promised about the same amount of money from their ESER funds, which is their version of the ARPA funds to fix some of the issues. Uh, so we held up that money anticipating with what the bids may come back on to get that, um, situated. One of the reasons that we think that's important, not only is all of our IT infrastructure from town hall goes back to the high school. That's how we connect to the, uh, our network. Um, it's also an emergency shelter, um, back up to town hall. Uh, speaking of the emergency shelter, that's all of our next items. Uh, this renovating the front hall and the locker rooms and stuff has been something that I think Eileen's been working on for 10 years. Um, it's really time that we do it. Um, not only is that an emergency shelter, it helps for parking programs and helps for items when we do activities on the lawn. Um, and, uh, Rich, you could speak to this better. I think you're on the building committee when town hall was done. Uh, that section of the building wasn't touched at all, I believe.
Right. All right. Let me ask a question. Where did you come up with the 700,000? Because I think it's way more than that.
Initially, when we bid it, it was, uh, closer to a million. Um, but I think that included some stuff that not, wouldn't necessarily need to be done. Um, I think it's been scaled down a little bit. Um, that's, we got to get a better price on it. We needed to put something there. Um, the million came back really high, and I think that included some, um, items that she's not really looking for now as part of it.
Well, when it, I mean, you can have further discussion about it, but, uh, originally the bathrooms weren't included in that million dollars uh, uh, construction thing, and it was, um, um, non-pervailing wage. So that's going to get it back up there near the million dollar mark.
Yeah. Um, so you're, you're right, Rich. It could go up higher. Um, we needed to put something together because, uh, as of October 30th, we have to put a plan out there to the state. Um, and the state, the way the state likes to operate these things, we're not really sure how they want us to file it yet, but we need to file a plan October 31st. So yeah, that, that number could be short. Um, but we didn't want to tie up too much of this money with it. We're going to have to get it to the point that we can bid it. And I know, I think that was part of the initial 20,000 that you guys approved in your last meeting.
Correct.
So.
Pick up the balance of the, the 700, if it goes to a million?
Well, yeah, it's something we, we can make a, any, yeah, we can make a recommendation on that. And we're not voting, I'm only going to ask you guys to vote on the first item tonight. Yeah. Because we're, we're waiting, we need bids to come in and have tighter costs. But I wanted to give you, give everybody an update on what was under consideration so far.
I, I'm a little concerned about one thing. Uh, the old police station, I would have thought that, uh, I don't think your committee considered it, but you carry that thing down and increase the, uh, field of availability for sports. Now, that, that's a perfect, uh, place for expanding those, the sports venue, but at the same time, we're protecting our water structure. Uh, you know, I've heard nothing about that. Was that anything considered by the committee? Cause I know I have.
Uh, yeah, so one.
Several times.
So one of the things that we did talk about with the, um, old police station, um, I know some work has to be done to get it to the point that we can figure out what it would cost to tear it down. Um, in my head, that would be our big parking rec project for year two. Um, we felt like Parloa was, because it had been studied by Malone and McBroom, it was a little bit further down the road than that. So by putting that in possibly as a year two option, it gives us a little time to study how much it would even cost to tear down the old police station. I know you got to, there's possibly asbestos in there, there's lead. Um, so I feel like that project would be much better for year two, for phase two.
And, and to your question.
It's on our radar though, Paul.
Yeah, to your question of, the, the department is putting out, um, a bid to find somebody to, uh, to tear it down, to remediate it.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that in one of the other ones. Yeah, that's a good point. And it would, it would apply.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so as part of the, uh, improvements to shelter, uh, obviously you could read them, but it's the cafeteria, restrooms, the senior center has been looking for those to be done for a while for their operations. Um, but more so than that, when the building is used as an emergency shelter, um, there's not really good bathrooms in that area, the cafeteria, if the people that are using the shelter, um, are using the cafeteria to eat in without having to send them all throughout the senior center. Um, again, that was never touched in the initial renovation of the building. The, uh, cafeteria, they need a, uh, fresh air intake for the ventilation. Apparently there's no fresh air going into that, um, cafeteria, and that's been an issue brought out by COVID. Uh, the municipal center, gym is not air conditioned. I guess it's all piped as part of the MRSCO program, program. Um, but there's just no cool air that goes into that. Um but there's just no cool air that goes into that ductwork. Um and then the last item in there is the elevators in Municipal Center. Um this probably would be a phase one and a phase two. Both of those elevators are in serious need of repair. Um it's in here as an emergency shelter, because it is important when we're in the shelter, but it is also important year-round. Um the elevator by closest to Matt's office goes down a lot. Um and it's the only way to get up to probate. They've had issues where they've had to hold the probate court. In Meeting Room A at times when somebody cannot access the second floor. I know it's an issue with our seniors. Um it's something that we should really get taken care of. Um and then the last category we have is infrastructure upgrades. Uh one of the things that Matt's been talking about for a while is uh updating the filing system in the Health Department. Uh that is pretty much a placeholder now, because we really have to dig deep into what that would look like. Um but I think we also need to get prices on some of our big ticket items first to see what they come in at, to Rich's point. You know, some of this stuff may need to be pushed to a phase two. Um so that's why we're trying to get to the point that we can get out bids. Uh the CAT six cabling for the Municipal Center, it's all the network infrastructure, it's all the Ethernet cable that runs through the building. Um we've added to it over the years as technology has changed since the building was renovated. Uh but it really needs an overhaul, just to make sure our network's as secure as possible. Um and then the last item is Municipal Center North Wing, fresh air intake. Uh speaking to the Public Works Director, um that whole section of the building has issues with air cooling. Um and this would not fix that per se. It would be a Band-Aid until they can get a much bigger project together. Um but obviously, the fresh air is big now with COVID. Um so all that adds up to two million nine hundred and five thousand. Um and that is net of the twenty thousand that the Board of Selectmen has already approved for the uh plans and drawing for the renovation of the front hall.
So at the present time, this is just an estimate or, or a wish list, correct?
Correct. Uh yes, I wouldn't, I, I don't love the word wish list, because we have put a lot of thought into it, but it is a. Um our desired plan, um we'll have to see how some of the money falls out when we start bidding stuff. And obviously, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance would need to approve it all, so it is subject to how your board feels and how the Board of Finance feels.
Brad, could you just give me a quick overlay of what they were planning upon our, our law field for a million dollars?
Yeah, so the nine twenty that was initially in the Malone and McBroom study, uh it includes new parking lot. Tear down of the baseball field, uh moving the basketball court. It includes a splash pad, uh renovating the bathrooms, which. I've lived, I lived, I've been forty years old, and I think those bathrooms were gross forty years ago, when I was a kid going to Parloa. Uh so it is, it is doing a lot of work to make that park more usable. I know Eileen gets a lot out of it with the kids and the soccer, um and soccer season using that field. Um Eileen is all for it, so she obviously has seen what it would do for our town. And I do think adding some, uh community site like a splash pad would be great for Bethel. Um it's not something we have right now. Um and it would really benefit the uh people that were hardest hit by COVID. Which is one of the things that they talk a lot with ARPA. Um try to do things for the people that were hardest hit. And for Bethel, I believe that is the downtown area. Um and that's one of the reasons we picked Parloa, Parloa two. You can walk to it from downtown, it's near the TOD. Um so we just figured that was probably the best bang for the buck to really affect Bethel. Um if you look at like McCowar, could use some work too, I'm sure. Um but McCowar is a park that you have to drive to for the most part, so that does hinder some people being able to get to it and use it.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the Parloa is phase one of that Malone and McBroom's study that was done. And improving all the parks, that's the Park and Rec Commission put together. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if it's phase one. I just have the, uh let's see if it says it on the plan.
They.
I'm not sure. You very well could be right on that.
Right, I, I, um it, it sounds familiar, improving the bathrooms, moving the basketball court, so you've got. You don't have big kids mixing with little kids, you know, it's a little bit more focused. Uh on the age, we've been putting in the splash pad. That was part of the long-range plan that came out of the Park and Rec Commission a couple of years ago. You guys probably remember that, yeah.
Yeah, it does have, in the Malone and McBroom study that I have in front of me, it does have a one in front of it, as well as some other items. Um so I believe it is in their phase one.
Okay, all right. Great. Uh let me just comment on one thing, uh the Health Department filing system. Uh you guys have both been to the new police station. One of the things that we really have a problem with is that our Health Department is just bursting at the seams. There, there is paper everywhere and no place to put it. And what I'm envisioning, and first, and we need a more contactless method of doing business in there too. So I'm, remember the records department filing system, you've got the big uh holders that you, you turn a crank and they move. So you could, you could put a lot of records in a small space. So I'm, I'm envisioning building something like that for that, and and we're, at, at some point when that's done, we're gonna have to look at staffing to make sure that. There is a records clerk that knows Health Department rules and state law and policy, so that these things can go in the right place. Because right now, if, if, uh, if Laura, if Laura decided to move to Brazil. I, 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 I don't know how anybody would find anything of where she is, so overwhelmed.
So where would you put that?
Um right behind Diane, there's a storage room, and there's basically, uh that wall could come out and you could have a filing system right right there.
Got you.
So that, that's one of the things I think is, uh in, in terms of improving uh health outcomes and, and the ability of the, of the park to function.
Right.
And perform their mission, I think, is important.
Yeah. And that fifty thousand dollar um estimate on there is, I talked to the Chief Pugner. And I believe uh when they built the police station, they spent ninety thousand dollars on their two different, but they have two separate lo, locations for their records. Um up in the record and then uh downstairs. Um so we kind of just cut it in half and added a little bit. Um it's hard to say until we really spec out what it would look like. Um it's hard to say, but I think that would be one of our later fa, uh later things to do in phase one.
Yeah. Okay, all right, okay. All right, now, um what happens next is, uh and as near as I can tell, I'll, I'll ask the town attorney to. Maybe get back to us at some point in the future if I'm wrong about this, but it, to the best of my knowledge. According to uh Governor Lamaz's chief counsel, the way this works is determined by every town's own charter. So uh what I was told uh by the, by the uh, uh the, the governor's attorney. Is that we should consider these ARPA funds as revenue that has come into our treasury. And the use of those funds would be dictated by our normal process. So we would vote on a given item. You know, it would go up to bid, we'd go to the Board of Finance and go to a special town meeting to approve, so we. So we're gonna, what, what that means is over the next two years, we're gonna be having to spend a lot of money on notices for special town meetings. So, and Marty's shaking his head.
No, I don't think that's correct.
I'm, I'm hoping I'm wrong.
The only thing, the only reason why you have to go to a town meeting is if in fact the town's contributing monies to it.
Is that the town?
The town has to be contributing monies to the grant. I would think this is a grant.
Okay.
You know, they're giving you a, they're giving you a pot, and they're saying, you know, spend it on what you think is correct in the town.
Yeah.
And then what happens is now, if, let's say, one of the things you decide you're gonna put a hundred thousand dollars in, and then it turns out. That after bidding process, it ends up being a hundred and ninety thousand. So now you've got to take ninety thousand out of the town's fund. Yes, then you've got to go to the town meeting.
Okay.
But if you don't, you don't get to that point. In fact, I'm wondering whether you, you have to go back to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
You know, I think the Board, there was one section in there that I have to look at a little bit closer. Well, what is, the way I read it, is that the Board of Finance only steps into the picture to say basically where the monies are coming from. If the monies are already there.
Okay.
And the Board of, the Board of Selectmen are in charge of all capital projects in the town.
Okay, so.
All right.
Well, I, I think that's the bigger issue, not the town meeting.
Okay.
Bigger issue as well, we actually have to go back to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
So if, if one of the uh, um projects was, say, like, were saying it was uh over ninety thousand dollars. Could, can you take more money from the pot?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you would have to come back to you people and you'd have to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, if you don't have the money and you need to go to the town to ask for the money, that's like the EDC with what they're doing. They're getting six hundred and thirty-five thousand seventeen dollars, am I right? For a grant, well, they've got to come up with almost the same amount of money to finish the project. In order for us to accept that initial grant, we have to have a town meeting.
Correct, right.
That month, to match it. And we don't, we don't match it, it's all gone.
Okay, okay.
Can, can I, one more question?
Yeah, sure.
I just, I just was wondering, was there any thought given to the land records?
Uh, oh, digitizing the land records?
Yeah, all, all, or the vast majority of it. Because right now, it only goes back to nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
That sounds like it's a long time. It's not, when you're searching a title.
Sure.
And the other problem that you have too is that you have to pay for everything if you want to see a document.
Yeah.
You know, you're talking about doing the health records, the building department records, I assume would be the zoning records and the fire marshal records. They're all beyond there. You can go right on and look at the actual document.
Yes.
You can't do that with the, with the town clerk's office, with the land records. You have to pay for that.
Yeah.
And I think a lot more people, I shouldn't say a lot more, I say there would be a very healthy majority of people using the land record. As there would be for the town building department.
Well, I would, uh, it, it, it would take, uh, I think that's a good suggestion, and we'll add that to the, we'll add that to the list for consideration, but. I'll tell you, one thing that would relieve us of is the burden of FOI requests.
Yes.
Because we get FOI demands from, basically from companies, for-profit companies. That are using the FOI law to gather information that they package and resell.
Right.
And it's a huge burden on our staff time to do that. So anything we can do to automate that and to. Make it accessible without, uh, without contact and without staff time would be a good thing. So that, good suggestion.
Marty, Marty, for the land records, um I believe she gets a grant for that to do the historic documents, and she's been cutting into that every year. Is that the land records, the other records that she has?
That's the land records, but the problem with that is you still can't see them online.
All right.
All you're talking about, all you're talking about is, if, if I wanted to check out the property of thirteen Milwaukee Avenue. I can go back online and look at the names of the people back to nineteen seventy. That's what you're talking about. I'm talking about actually look the document. You can't see the document. You have to pay for it.
Oh, all right. Oh, so I believe she has them scanned, so that might just be, at least to the part that goes back to nineteen seventy. I wonder if there is a way to just interact that now with an online system. Uh but that would be a conversation with Lisa Burke.
Yeah, we'll look into that, that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
All right, so um I'm gonna go back to the uh, the request from the EDC. And I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve uh an allocation of three hundred and fifty thousand to be uh taken from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. For the purpose of setting a, setting up the Bethel Small Business Assistance Program. And further to approve, or, or to empower the EDC to issue uh such grants as they uh deemed fit upon their review process. So that we don't have to come back and vote on every single one if they do. So we can empower them that way.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve that. Uh and there's a second, any other comments or discussion?
I think they should send us a summary each time.
Okay.
Monthly summary?
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, then I'll add that to the motion that the EDC will, is, is, uh, will send us a monthly summary of uh, of issues of the uh, the checks that are issued, the grants that are issued. Great, any other comments?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Matt Carries and uh.
Matt, Matt, before you move on.
Yeah.
Um Marty, before, I know this is kind of a rush, but before the Board of Finance meets Tuesday. It'd be great if you looked into more of whether or not the Board of Finance does have to approve ARPA funds or not.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um Janice and Mike, uh and Mike, please convey your uh, to our, our best wishes to the EDC and thank them for all the work they put into this. I know this has taken some time, but uh I'm, I'm glad that our first use of the funds are going to the small businesses in Bethel. I think that's a good thing, and it, it's gonna help some people. So thank you very much for all that you put into this, and thanks for staying online till.
All right, well, and, and thank you for that support, and uh, and Marty, I echo uh what Brad said in terms of uh. Letting us know if we have to uh go in front of the Board of Finance for approval.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Yep, bye-bye now.
All right, moving on to item number eleven. Um I, no, I, I, I don't want to be presumptuous, but. Uh in our last meeting, the Board of Selectmen approved a rec, and recommended to the Board of Finance that we approve the purchase of the demo fire truck. Um their next meeting is a week from today on the fourteenth. I don't know that they, they, I think the, uh, what I heard was that the Board of Finance had some questions about that. They're going to be speaking with members of the Fire Commission. Um but just in case they have it on their agenda, I want to reserve a date for a special town meeting, so that we don't lose any time on that. So to, uh Marty, what's, what's the time window on a special town meeting? Is it ten days?
Ten days from the Board of Finance.
That would be.
Gotta get the paper, and then it's gotta come back to those.
Yeah, that, and that would be uh the twenty, well, ten days would be the twenty-fourth. I'm gonna make a motion that we establish Monday, the twenty-seventh of September, seven PM. In uh, at the Clifford J, Meeting Room A in Clifford J Urgent Municipal Center. For a special town meeting to consider a fire truck, if so approved by the Board of Finance.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Does that enough time for Deon to publish it?
Deon, is that time, good time for you?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, I'll try and remind those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, and final item. Uh this is a little bit of a typo, uh because we have macros built into our word processing systems, and I got confused between LOSA and LOSAP. This is actually a request to approve the LOSA funds. This is our grant system with the state of Connecticut. Stands for Local Capital Improvement Program, if you guys remember from the budget process. Uh the Board of Finance reduced the uh highway budget down to a half a million dollars. And we uh pledged that we would use seven hundred and fifty thousand of our accumulated LOSA funds. To complete the twenty-one dash twenty-two hu, uh highway reconstruction program. Uh we have about eight hundred and ninety thousand fun, uh dollars in LOSA funds accumulated, so this doesn't. Takes a big chunk of it, but there's still some left. So in order to apply for those funds, we are at that stage in the process where we would need to. Uh produce that funding, uh the state of Connecticut requires a positive vote on, on the app of the uh Board of Selectmen. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve an application for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our LOSA account. For the use uh in our high, uh night, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two highway construction program.
Second.
All right, motion is made. Second, any, any comments?
Is it mainly for what's proposed here?
Yes.
I have a question about Fleetwood Avenue.
Yeah.
Um I think we need to check with PUC, because I think there's some water mades that need to be replaced on Fleetwood Avenue.
Okay.
And I'm gonna put a new road down after they go, make sure.
Okay, uh we can, all right, we.
I mean, the rest, the rest of them are fine, and, and you can leave it in there.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we can leave it in there for now.
Yeah, I don't want, I'll just go ahead and do it.
Okay.
I know we, they get up, yeah.
Okay, uh so noted, that's, that's a good catch, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'll try and remind those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got motion carries, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Dear Jared, uh thank you, everyone. Thank you, Deon. Thanks, Marty. Thank you, my colleagues. Um very efficient meeting, we got a lot done.
Yeah.